If they had a chance to go to the US as refugees, they probably would love to take up that offer.
But there is no such offer.
But there is no such offer. And I think a lot of black South Africans, they feel that for the Trump administration, this is not about how much someone is suffering, but it's about the type of person they want in their country.
Hmm.
Thank you very much. And thanks, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out here this afternoon.
And as the Deputy Secretary of State said when the Afrikaans arrived.
This would be in the interest of the United States. Some of the criteria are making sure that refugees did not pose any challenge to our national security and that they could be assimilated easily into our country.
He said that they feel that they will assimilate well in the US. And ultimately, that makes it no longer about persecution, but about who fits the image that this administration wants to see in the country.
We wish them well. We welcome these people to the United States and to a new future. Thank you very much.
And that image is somebody who's white.
Somebody who's white.
Well, John, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
The Daily is supported by BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy and helping clients find balance. Clients are matched with one of 30,000 therapists for online therapy from anywhere at betterhelp.com-public. And by WSJ Plus, a news bundle offering global insights and market tools from four businesses and finance publications, so readers can explore every angle. Distribution of The Daily is made possible by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our 7 o'clock PM session of the Roanoke City Council. And I'll invite our Clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Volleson?
Here.
Ms. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Here.
Mr. Nash?
Here.
And Mayor Cobb?
Here, and a quorum is present. Reverend Dr. Amy Hodge, pastor at Mount Zion AME Church, will be delivering our invocation. And then, following the invocation, I'm going to invite Boy Scout Troop 17, sponsored by St. John's Episcopal Church, to come up, introduce themselves, tell us a little bit about their troop, and then they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right? Please stand.
Will you pray with me? Gracious God, all wise and all powerful sovereign God, we gather here this evening as the Roanoke City Council convenes under the leadership of Mayor Joseph Cobb and City Manager Val Marie Turner, along with Vice Mayor Terry McGuire, Council members Nicholas Haven, Faison Hash, Evelyn Powers, Vivian Sanchez Jones, and Peter Velosen, we humbly ask that your Spirit of justice and mercy would inhabit the hearts and minds of each and every one of these dedicated individuals. May their deliberations be guided by fairness, equity, and a deep compassion for all the residents of our city. We lift up the needs of the people of Roanoke, praying that they become a paramount concern in every decision made tonight. Grant our leaders wisdom and discernment to understand the challenges faced by our community and to create solutions that foster well-being and opportunity for all. We invite your divine presence into this meeting, oh most high God. Intercede in the discussions. Bless this gathering, that it may be fruitful and lead to outcomes to serve the best interests of Roanoke. May your grace and guidance be evident in all that is said and done in the matchless, marvelous, miraculous name of your Son and our Savior. We do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Hodge. I don't know if the troops come up?
Hi, I'm Will Hancock.
I'm Brody Vakarot.
I'm Thomas Correll. Hello, my name is George Clements. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our troop. We are Troop 17, St. John's Episcopal Church. We meet Monday nights at 7 o'clock. And we're currently working on our citizenship in the community merit badge. So, yeah, we're just very appreciative to be here, and thank you all.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't you guys come up? We'll get a picture of you, okay? You wanted to stand right here in the middle?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. This time, I'll invite Councilwoman Powers to certify our closed meeting.
A move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, was heard, discussed, or considered by the members of City of Council in attendance.
Second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. We have no presentations and acknowledgements tonight, so we'll move right into our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a request of William H. Chapman Jr., representing Sunlight Bakery Building LLC, to repeal all conditions proffered as part of a previous rezoning at 501 Salem Avenue Southwest bearing official tax map number 1111315. The conditions proposed for repeal adopted through the enactment of ordinance number 37957-111907 dated November 19, 2007, regulate the number of residential units, location of fencing, and retention of buildings on the property. And William Chapman is the spokesperson. There's one measure in ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Volleson and Mr. Hagan. Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to repeal the proffered conditions contained in ordinance number 37957-111907, adopted November 19, 2007, to the extent that it placed certain conditions on property located at 501 Salem Avenue Southwest bearing official tax map number 1111315 and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Is Mr. Chapman here tonight? Or Catherine, are you here to respond to any questions? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a building that has sat vacant for decades. And Mr. Chapman is proposing to renovate it with residential units and commercial space. He is not able to develop it in the form that he wants to with the existing proffered conditions on the property that were put back on it in 2007. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from our planning commission to have those proffered conditions repealed.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens wishing to speak on this matter?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. I will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item 2 is a public hearing on the 2025 through 2029 Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, consolidated plan and the 2025 Annual Action Plan. Gillian Papa, Director of Planning, Building, and Development, I believe is here this evening. And you're welcome to bring up anyone that you'd like. Gillian?
Hi, Katie. Good evening. I'm Katie Kennedy with our planning department. And I'd like to introduce our consultant, Resource Consultant. Her name is Elizabeth McNanny, and she's been working with us as we've been developing the plan, collecting data, assisting with reviewing community input. And I'm going to pass it over to her for giving some additional information.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, council and mayor staff. It's wonderful to be here this evening. We have a short presentation. Are we doing that at this point?
Yes.
Okay. While we're finding that, I may just go ahead and talk a little bit about the planning process and part of what we've been working on over the last number of months. Again, I'm Elizabeth McNanny with Resource Consultants, and I've been working with the city for, in some capacity, for a number of years. HUD requires that every community put together a five-year plan and tell them effectively how you're going to spend the money. The five-year plan is really about the big buckets of funding. And the Annual Action Plan, which there is one each year during that five-year process, is a little more about the smaller buckets of money, not necessarily the activities that you're doing on the ground, but it's really about the budget. There are also some housing market assessments and needs analysis that go into the plan, too. Should I just keep going? Okay. Okay. So I'll kind of go through some of this information that we have here. Congress passes a budget each year. And then HUD goes through a process by which they do an analysis of the needs in the community that include housing stock and poverty rates and things like that. They do it two different ways. If you want to know, and I've been asked, how HUD determines the amount that each community gets, there's actually a YouTube video that goes over it. It's super riveting. But it really does kind of walk you through the process if you're interested. And I think links to that are even on the HUD exchange. So we know now how much money the city of Roanoke is going to get in what we call program year 2025, that starts on July 1. That information just came out at the end of last week. And the city of Roanoke has been working on developing a plan for how that funding will be expended. So the city receives three pots of funding from HUD. They receive Community Development Block Grant funding, which is really about community development activities. Some of them are related to housing, but CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant funding, typically can't be used to actually build houses. It can be used to support the development of houses, upgrades to parks, streetscapes, things like that, as well as rehabilitation, a number of different things. It's pretty flexible. It must be used to serve primarily residents in the community that make 80% or less of area median income. Home partnership funds are a little bit different. They're a little bit more targeted to actual home development, development of housing, both multifamily and single-family. They can also support down payment assistance, some tenant-based rental assistance, and activities like that. It's a little more strategic and targeted than CDBG. Those funds, if you're looking at development of rental housing, they really need to target residents that are at 60% or below of area median income for household size. The Emergency Solutions Grant, which ESG, it really is about serving the homeless in the community. And it's the smallest pot of money with really the greatest need. And it helps to support tracking systems, the reporting system that the Coordinated Entry and the Continuum of Care use. And it targets folks who are at risk of homelessness or actually homeless. And really works with residents who are at 30% or below of area median income. In the consolidated plan, you have a few different sections. One is the executive summary, and it really just kind of talks about the consultation process as well as just a few other summary items because it's hard to read the whole document sometimes. It also includes a housing and homeless needs assessment. And it's not like what we think of as a broad community housing needs assessment. It's very, very prescriptive. So it utilizes a lot of information that HUD wants us to have in there. And also the housing market analysis. Again, very prescriptive, related to HUD's requirements. It also includes a strategic plan, which is really about the budget. So in the consolidated plan, it's the big bucket budget. And then again, you get to the smaller buckets in the action plan. And included with the first submission will be an annual action plan. Talks about specific goals and activities that may be undertaken in that first year, but it's really at a project level. So some of the things that we have done to engage the community are surveys. And some of those surveys were really, really targeted to get the best information we could from the communities that can be served by these funds. So part of the outreach was, of course, on social media because that's effective, vision boards or visual boards, and at libraries. Also at Casa Latina Food Pickup, surveys were, you know, folks were engaged and surveys were gathered. Norwich Community Festival and the Roanoke Rescue Mission. So that was really exciting because we were reaching people who are literally homeless in many cases and were able to talk with them and engage with them about their greatest needs. And we also, during that event, staff was able to hand out some socks and snacks and things like that and really get engaged with folks there. So these are just some highlights. We've had stakeholder sessions. And we've had those with BRIC, the Blue Ridge Independent Living Center, that's really focused on disability and accessibility needs in the community. And that information is woven through the plan in sections that are very specific to that. BRIC, so the Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homeless. And that was a way to gather information from a number of stakeholders and was really important. Also, the COC, Continuum of Care, the Fair Housing Board, the Housing Authority and Legal Aid. Just some highlights. There's a whole list of agencies that were consulted in the plan. Some of the data that we use, it's the American Community Survey Data, 2019 to 2023, which is the most recent data that we have, CHAZ data, Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy, National Low Income Housing Coalition studies and data from their site, Policy Map, which has some really great information, your own comprehensive plan, hazard mitigation plans, and Local Housing Solutions, Housing Needs Assessment. They do, they kind of combine some CHAZ and ACS data along with some other updated information, community by community. So that's really interesting, and it's a great way to gain access to information. The point-in-time count, where you're counting actual homeless folks in Roanoke, and the housing inventory count. So really localized data right there. And so we've really looked at how we can get public comment, how we can engage stakeholders, how we can get the information that's necessary. So of course, through the surveys, housing is a big one. Interestingly, we've heard a lot more than normal about parks, the desire for things like park upgrades and other infrastructure upgrades, as well as services. There's always a need for public services in the community. So in the consolidated plan, as we're thinking about putting this together, you identify high-level needs. And we typically utilize HUD's objectives for these programs, which are decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded opportunities for low and moderate-income residents. Why do we use those? Because they encompass and really capture every single thing you could do with all of these programs. The goals, which are also in the consolidated plan, are, you know, slightly larger in number. I think we have five? And then the projects, which again are the slightly smaller buckets, so you'll have more of those, those are part of the Annual Action Plan. This year, so, and I will say this before I give you the amounts, which you may already know, but this is not enough money to solve any one problem in any community. It's really about leveraging these funds and being strategic about their use. And staff has done that. I mean, they're really thinking about how do we leverage funds to the best ability possible to serve the most residents in Roanoke. The Community Development Block Grant program will receive $1,805,116. The Emergency Solutions Grant, again targeted at homeless or at risk of homeless, will receive $159,190. And the Home Investment Partnership Program will receive $576,593.62 because HUD can't make anything easy for communities. So this is, this is really, again, a robust program, but it has limitations, too. So I will stand for any questions or move to the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll move to the public hearing, and we'll come back for any questions.
Great.
So I'm going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens signed up to speak on this matter? All right. Then I will close the public hearing and ask for any questions or comments by members of council. Mr. Volleson?
Yes, I was just wondering, you kind of stated this earlier, that with ESG being the smallest amount, but the biggest problem that we probably have here in the city with homelessness. So how do we get to, you know, we have 2.5 million for all this, but we're, it seems every time I've been on council, the ESG gets the smallest amount of money, but it's a big need.
It is a big need. And this is really about HUD funding. And, you know, this is where it's important to talk and train up. I mean, we need to be talking to our representatives about the needs in our community. And that's not all the money that goes to support homeless services. So some of the CDBG money may go to support homeless services in some years. The American Rescue Plan and Home American Rescue Plan funding are really targeted at building units that are, that offer permanent supportive housing to people who were literally homeless. So there are some other things that are happening here in Roanoke specifically that are targeting homeless populations.
Is there consideration for, like, the future? Where we know if we hit a recession, we might actually see increases in homelessness. Is that something that we just need to talk to our Congress folks about and say, hey, next year, we need to really make sure that this is happening?
With funding so up in the air at this point, the continuing resolution is what really kept funding at stable levels for this year. We don't really know what's going to happen. Many of these funds were zeroed out in the president's budget. So it's really important to be talking to our representatives, kind of across the aisles, to really talk about how important these programs are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Powers?
So do you have data that shows the ability of how you have helped people come out of homelessness and be self-sufficient on their own? So as I see that we end up having to have cuts in these type of programs, then the domino effect is just more people end up being in the homeless situation. So we're actually working on a letter that our council is going to send. But it would be nice, do you have data to show X amount of people were able to come out of public assisted housing, and now they're self-sufficient and they're able to be on their own? Because I think that would be helpful if we had that type of information that we could include as we do talk to our representatives.
So there are two things that I would suggest that you might want to consider including. One is talking with the Housing Authority about how many of their residents have gone through the Family Self-Sufficiency Program and then, you know, maybe purchased a home. And then that, so that would be number one. And number two would be the programs that have been operating recently that have been called Home Safe in the department that are funded with American Rescue Plan and Home Rescue Plan funding have actually housed literally homeless people with permanent supportive housing and those services. So I think that staff could definitely get some data on that. What, you know, what great opportunities those have been. And that's like once-in-a-lifetime funding. So it's making a difference in the community right now. So it's making a difference in the community right now. So absolutely, those two things would be what I would recommend really looking at to kind of weave into that.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I'm just curious about something because this tends to come up every year, but, and maybe staff can also help with this. At least within the last two years, I've heard that the HUD funding we've gotten and continue to get is still the equivalent of what we were receiving 30 years ago. So you can imagine that as the need has increased, the funding has not changed, which makes it even harder for us to, to make reductions in homelessness and getting more people housed. Is that pretty accurate?
That is very accurate, I'm sorry to say. So nothing in these funding streams has really kept up with inflation or population needs. So it is where, you know, it's important, again, to make sure that we craft that story.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're not going to take action on this tonight. We'll take action on it at our June 2 meeting. This is just merely a public hearing tonight. Thank you all very much. Item number three is the execution of an easement to the--
Mr. Mayor, did we open it?
We did.
Okay. Just one double check.
Yep. Number three is the execution of an easement to the Western Virginia Water Authority for water and sewer distribution lines across official tax map number 2031801, belonging to the City of Roanoke. We have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Ms. Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to read, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of the following easement across city-owned property located at 1610 Burl Street, Roanoke Official Tax Map Number 2031801, commonly known as Washington Park, to the Western Virginia Water Authority. One, a permanent 20-foot water line easement together with a 10-foot temporary construction easement. And two, a variable width public sanitary sewer easement together with a 10-foot temporary construction easement upon certain terms and conditions and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, is there anything you'd like to add to this? I know I have Mr. Nelson down as spokesperson, but I don't believe he's here tonight.
No comments, please.
Okay.
Mr. Campbell is here.
Oh, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me up here. In the document, there is a, or in the council report, there is a document that shows the easement that is for existing infrastructure along with temporary construction easements for maintenance of that existing line that runs through Washington Park. So there is no additional construction that will happen within that, within that easement is already in place for the existing facilities there. Furthermore, the new pool, the caretakers' cottage, tennis courts, and other amenities there in the park are not affected by this easement.
Okay, thank you very much. I will open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, do we have citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item four is to amend Article II Real Estate Taxes Generally, Chapter 32 Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke, to allow by classification and assessment of blighted and derelict property at a higher tax rate. There is one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Volleson. And I'll invite our clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining Article II Real Estate Taxes Generally, Chapter 32 Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended by the addition of a new Division 10, Classification and Assessment of Blighted Properties and Derelict Buildings, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Casey Bratton, our Director of Real Estate Valuation, is here. Welcome, Mr. Bratton.
Thank you.
I'll ask if you have any comments you'd like to share. Because I, and just for everyone's reminder, we received a briefing on this at our last meeting.
Yes, sir.
So this is the public hearing and vote schedule.
Well, it's just, you're just like, Mayor Cobb and Vice Mayor McGuire, members of council, it's just as we said, it's going to be a special tax classification for blighted and derelict property. If it's blighted, it'll be a 5% increase on the tax rate, and if it's derelict, it'll be a 10% increase on the tax rate. And it's just, it's just disincentivized continued, you know, property blighted and derelict condition. If you have any other question, I'm happy to answer.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing first. Do we have any citizens wishing to speak on this matter?
No, sir.
All right. I will close the public hearing and first go to Mr. Hagan and then Mr. Volleson.
Uh, Ms. Bratton, is this the maximum amount allowed by state law?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I had the same question.
Okay.
Ms. Powers.
So can you just explain to us how, what the city's plans is to get this information out to the property owners as you identify these properties?
Yeah, we're going to continue to coordinate with code enforcement and just work through them initially with the intention of not just the longstanding property that are derelict and blighted, and we're going to look at those. And I think that's going to be the safest way for us to stay within the, you know, legal parameters of doing this initially. And then hopefully, we can roll the program out this year in the fall. Because what has to happen is, these folks are entitled to the same appeal process as taxpayers, so we would have to notify them in January of this condition, whether or not they're blighted or derelict. So we'd have to go through the same process. So by the fall, we should be assembling that group, that for this initial group, and then sending out notification in January so that they have the opportunity to appeal to us, then the Board of Equalization, and they can appeal to the circuit court as well. So they're entitled to the same appeal process.
And then that, it'll be on the city's website, all--
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Along with everything else that we have about real estate.
Yes, we will update.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bratton. I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Our last public hearing this evening is amendment to the Roanoke City Public Schools Fiscal Year 24-25 Budget. There is one measure and ordinance, and I need a motion in a second, please.
Move the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Nash and Vice Mayor McGuire. And we do have, thank you. Councilwoman Sanchez Jones has a statement she needs to read.
I, Vivian Sanchez Jones, state that I have a personal interest in adding number 15-5 on the May 19, 2025 7:00 PM agenda regarding an amendment to the school budget because I am an employee of the City of Roanoke Public School Division. And as such, I have a personal interest in this matter. Therefore, in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112, I will refrain from participation in this matter. I ask the city clerk to accept this statement and ask that it could be made part of a minute for this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez Jones. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk--
Yes, yes, sir.
Do we have any citizens signed up to speak on this matter?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by council?
Is there somebody to ask these questions to?
So I know that Ms. Lindsay is here from, in terms of the city, and I also see Dr. Seabert and Mr. Perkins here this evening.
My main question is, well, I guess, Ms. Lindsay, is it true that the city has a $20 million set of debt that is set aside for school construction?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear.
The 20, is it true that there's a $20 million worth of debt that the city takes out on behalf of the schools?
Every year, with certain exceptions. As part of the city's capital improvement plan and the funding sources for that, we have, for the past number of years, set aside $5 million per year. So in our CIP plan for over the five years that that always covers, you would see $25 million, $5 million each year that is then part of what I will call the active funded portion for CIP, whether it's hours or schools or stormwater and so forth.
On that, I believe it's called SNAP for short? SNAP for short?
That's where the bond funds go when the bonds are, go to market and they send us money. They go into SNAP that's managed by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And as expenditures come for each project or that is funded by that year's bonds, we reimburse ourselves. Same with the schools. So because schools are their own entities, set their own spending plans, they have a SNAP account, just like we have a SNAP account, and do so for each of the different bond issues, which are generally by year. So the 2024 bond issue has a school portion and a city portion that lives there with SNAP folks. And yes, I would have to double-check the most recent SNAP reports that we get to remember the exact numbers, but that's, in round numbers, that's very close.
And does the city pay interest on those bonds that are already taken out?
SNAP pays interest to schools and to city. And then, of course, the repayments of the bonds are an amortization schedule that are provided prior to the sale of the bonds. So we all know schools have their debt service repayments and city has theirs.
And so at this time, that 20 million is not being currently used and we are paying interest on it as a city?
Well, schools pay their own debt service, so we are not having to pay. And they would then collect interest earned from SNAP, and that goes their direction, so to speak, and we do the same with ours.
So the reason I ask these questions is because I believe that these requests that we're approving this evening are, some of these funds could have been used by the debt that's been taken out. And so I'm wondering why the school system is not using the debt that we've already taken out versus cash funding for these things.
I honestly don't know the answer to that because I don't know the detail of what those bonds that are, the funds from are sitting in SNAP were designed to cover spending-wise. So what is before you, as far as I'm aware, is additional requests above and beyond what is funded or planned to be used by the SNAP funds.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any additional questions? All right, did, did you read the opening paragraph? Did I ask you to do that, Ms. McCoy?
No.
Okay, I just leapt right over that. So you, could you please read that into the record? My apologies.
An ordinance amending the City of Roanoke's annual budget for fiscal year 2025, previously adopted by city council to appropriate funding for educational purpose in order to fund certain school board budget shortfalls and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
And the ordinance further spells out that this is for continuing and new capital projects. All right. All right, Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to vote.
Yes, he did. An ordinance amending--
No, we're ready to vote.
Y'all ready to vote?
Yeah.
That's why I was double-looking here.
Sorry, I added to the confusion there. My apologies.
All right. Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes our public hearings for the evening, and now we'll move into our hearing of citizens upon public matters. We set aside this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report back to city council. And Madam Clerk, if you will please call out citizens two by two.
I will.
And you'll have, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Three.
Three speakers?
Yes.
Okay, you have up to five minutes each.
All right. The first speaker, Bernadette Lark, followed by Jimmy Cook.
Hello, do you always have officers present?
Okay.
Yeah, we always do.
Thank you for responding.
Welcome.
So with the heavy heart and pain, I'm speaking to you all today because I actually have hope. Otherwise, my words and my time would be vain. I have a very limited time to speak, so yes, I scripted it so all my words could be intentional. When you were running to be elected, I couldn't stop you from calling me because you wanted my support. But when I sent you formal complaints, only Vivian called me, and she never asked for my vote. Your responses to my formal complaints has shown you believe it's easier to go along with the narrative that leadership has chosen to criminalize a black body rather than hold officers accountable. Can't be hard. Despite the deadly threats that I received from what appeared to be fan clubs of people upset that I'm asking for accountability to obvious harm, caught on video, I will still stand and seek justice for my son and my family. Today, I stand before you not just as a mother, but as a voice of truth in a city apparently being poisoned by some type of abuse of power. You're desiring to thrive in division instead of leading with integrity. You have cliques and you have bullies in leadership that obviously controls you all. You should not be puppets, and your very positions you were elected to was because we believe you have your own set of ethics and morals that drive you as an individual, not puppets at the hand of city attorneys. I'm certain by now you saw the videos. Over eight million people saw what I shared with a friend named Jolly, who doesn't live in this community. On March 18th, for those who don't know, my son was brutally attacked by police officers on our private property in Northwest, delivering me a bag of batteries. They hit my son so hard, the bag imploded. In fact, they rammed him into the door where my four-year-old granddaughter was standing. These police officers will never be available to speak the truth of crimes because they were non-committed when they violated my son. You intentionally weaponized a video and a narrative designed to turn the city against him, but you also put him in more danger. Shame on you. But I ask what kind of leadership chooses to incite division instead of fostering healing with me, someone who's prioritized with you, mayor, for years? No violence. And that means at the hand of anyone, even police. What kind of city leaders turn the power in your hands to a platform where a young black man who's already traumatized by violence, you would actually share a video that would subject him to more danger? What you did was not a betrayal. It was an act of intentional harm. You all thought this out, you planned it out, and you did it. You knew exactly who you were speaking to. You knew the audience you wanted to incite when you did what you did. Bravo. However, do you know that young man graduated with honors, 16-year-olds, and in the presidential book? He was dual-enrolling college, engineering and robotic certificates. You know what he's peddling to the community? Hope. He meets on that site two playing gaming and zoning centers for young people to be off the street. This isn't leadership. This isn't justice. This is a betrayal to everything I've dedicated my life to in the city. This is an abuse of power, and you are weaponizing public trust. Today, I came to call it out. I will be back to speak. So to shorten this, I believe city leadership knew from the beginning of this investigation when you saw the videos, my son had done nothing wrong that would warrant this. But I say to you and everyone in this space and everyone who sees this video, had those doors open and it was a white person, specifically a white female, coming to bring me a bag of batteries, she would not have likely been treated and brutally attacked the way my son was. And that is what makes-- And that is what makes this wrong. Until we can see people in the eyes of love and humanity, I will not stop speaking, I will not stop demanding, and I will not be silenced, even though you became mucus to me because you clearly are scared of whoever has the power to control you. And yes, I'm speaking to all of you. I've been through this before, but not this time. I had to expose the truth. I know my time will run out. So let me tell you what equitable treatment looks like. It's when every single one of you in this room can go home and reflect on the truth of my words. And if you even have a 1% doubt that this would have happened had my son been a white female, you owe us transparency, change, and equitable care and treatment, especially in Northwest City, where we work and we serve. I am speaking directly to you. I haven't gone anywhere yet. You're trying to drive me and my family out of the community, and all we do is serve our youth. Shame to treat us this way.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Ms. Jimmy.
Um, I'm not going to speak, Ms. Randolph is going to speak for me because I have a stroke, so I can't talk.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Good evening, city council. I'm back again. I'm back because of situation with Hurt Park. I need to give you a little history of Hurt Park. We are the residents of Southwest, but Hurt Park was originated because the city did away with Northeast. You know about that history. So I moved in the old Hurt Park, and I lived there with my children, and I enjoyed the old Hurt Park. But, you know, people move out. I retired, went to West Virginia, and I moved back, and I said I would live nowhere else but Hurt Park, and that's where I moved to. I'm 77 years old. I am retired from radiation oncology, part of Korean, and I am on a limited income. But the reason I'm here today is that, as the lady spoke earlier about homeless, we might become homeless because of rent hikes. I am not rich, I own no property, and I haven't hit the lottery. So there's no way that I can be on tax credit, low-income, hood apartment, and housing expects me to spend, to pay them $950. For what? You don't even keep up with the property. There are things that they need to do that they don't do. I have been there ever since 2014. I am still there. I have never been late with my rent. Matter of fact, we're early because we get paid on the third of the month, and we're always early. I cannot understand how people in Roanoke can see us as less. I have taken care of multimillion-dollar people in the Roanoke Valley, and I have taken care of the poorest in Roanoke Valley. I demand justice because now I am a senior citizen. I thought this would never happen to me. If somebody had have told me, Brenda, that you be treated as such, I would not believe it. I sympathize for senior citizens, not because I am a senior citizen, it's because I am on a fixed income. We have stressed about this rent income, I mean, you know, hike. It's not fair to us to have to run our heads into a brick wall and we can't go nowhere. My daughter and I have traveled all over Roanoke checking housing. Some of these realtors want you to pay a double rent. Okay, so if their rent is 1,200, that means what? You expect for me to pay a double rent plus a deposit? That is ridiculous. Who do you think we are? If you don't want us in the community, tell us. When you build something for us, then, then we're treated this way. I went up on Brandon, and I, I can tell you where it is? It's near Stratford Park, and I said, let me go. I would not have a dog living in them apartments. And I said, oh, no, it's terrible-looking. I should not drop to a level that I'm not used to. I'm not trying to be bougie, and I'm not trying to be all that, but I just want to bring it to you that Roanoke City need to do better by the senior citizens in the Roanoke Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Cook and Ms. Randolph. Who's our next speaker?
We don't have any more. That's it.
Oh, that's the three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're done.
So it was those three speakers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, with the conclusion of our hearing of citizens and there being no further business set forth to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.
Because you won't see its effect for a long time. Things where there's an immediate measurement available, and businesses have, already have age-old practices to measure the outcomes, customer satisfaction, number of false positives, you know, some things that are black and white, just you can measure them. It's easy to test and it's easy to deploy. So I agree with you. I think it's very important for areas where we don't know, and we can measure the outcomes that quickly. And it takes time.
Okay, so Ari, I want to actually circle back to roughly where we started because-